Good evening and welcome. It is April 14th, the Town Board Business Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before starting the business meeting with the supervisor's report, I want to express on behalf of the town, our condolences to the family and friends of Marcy Appel, who died on Easter Sunday and whose funeral was today. She was a longtime volunteer, both at the Town of Red Hook, throughout the community, on various committees. She was Chair of the Planning Board, I learned today, for 26 years. So that is a devoted volunteer. She also served on the Tree Committee, she served on St. Margaret's Committee, she served Duchess County Planning, she was a member of the Board of Winnicke Land Trust. She did all good things. And when a good soul leaves us, I think it's important to say so. So, our love to Ken, and to David, and to Ann, and all of the many friends that they have in the community. They've lived here many years, and she will be really, really missed by us all. So if the Town Clerk would dedicate a page to Marcy's memory in tonight's minutes, I would appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Thank you. I have two supervisors' reports for tonight. The first is for the month of January, and so I will read them successively. "To the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook pursuant to Section 119 of the Town Law, I hereby tender the following detailed statement of all monies received and dispersed by the Supervisor during the month of January." The opening balance was $2,780,051. We received $411,192 and dispersed $596,390, leaving at the end of the month, January 31st, The month of February's statement follows. The opening balance was $2,594,854. We received $432,189 and dispersed $464,018, leaving a balance of $2,563,025. And Board, if you will look at the very last page of this report, you will see that Ann has noted to us that there was an increase in the amount of $182, and it is offset by an increase in appropriations. This is an odd kind of donation to the town. I don't think I've ever seen it in the 18 years I've been here. The Justice Department was paid by a person who should have served community service, but was out of the country, paid this amount of money. And the Justice Department decided to donate it to the town for the Recreation Department Concession Stand. So that's how it's being sent. Espence, excuse me. So, that is my report. Are there any questions? Then the above is a true and correct accounting of the balances shown on the books of the Town of Red Hook at the close of business on both January 31st, 2015, and February 28th, 2015. Is there a motion to accept?
Still no. Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And you'll note that there is a statement about standing accounts receivables from the Town Bookkeeper, just to keep us informed of balances for the year. We have a minor balance from Red Hook Central School. Village of Tivoli has reduced the balance of, the Village of Red Hook has reduced the balance of, the Red Hook Fire Company is, has paid two months and is still owing a slight amount. And the pilot's billing has just gone out, so we'll be receiving that shortly. And that's all I have for you in regard to those items. Are there any questions on that? Tonight, we have great pleasure in having winners of the DEC scholarships. There are two scholarships this year, and so I would like to call up, if I may, Rebecca Rebecca, come right up here in front, so everybody can see your face. And thank you for applying to that. Tell me, have you decided where you're going to camp, to the DEC camp?
I'm going over to the camps over in Catskill.
Over in Catskill, that's so exciting. And do you know who the sponsor of your program is?
I do remember.
It is Bruce Cutler, who is here. Dr. Bruce Cutler is representing the Masonic Lodge. So he's going to come up and give you a certificate and a letter from the Town Board. And our heartiest congratulations to you. And I'm going to ask you one thing, if I may. When you come back from the camp?
Yes.
In September, when everybody is looking to see what we're doing, would you come back in September and tell us about your experience?
Sure.
That would be fabulous. Dr. Cutler?
Rebecca, on behalf of Hendrick Hudson Lodge number 875, of free and accepted places, very proud to present you with this certificate, which is to sponsor you for a week at the DEC camp. And I believe you're going to camp DeBruce.
DeBruce.
Do you have the letter?
You, somebody has.
I think I gave it back to you.
Oh, you did, sorry.
Yes. I'm a member of another organization that sponsors young people to the DEC camps, and usually Camp DeBruce. And everyone as old as, just loves it. They have a great experience. And unlike some of the older people here, in our generation, my generation, we kind of learned about nature on our own. We just went out in the woods, did things all day long. But your generation, it's not as easy. So it is an excellent experience. So here you go. I'd be very welcome.
Congratulations.[517.41][517.41](APPLAUSE). Come up. Rocky, I say it wrong, good night. Forgive me, Rocky, how are you? Congratulations, and we're so excited for you.
Me too.
And you would like to meet the representative of the VFW, Post 7765, who is Commander Moore, who will give you this certificate.
I do.
Yes, and this is a letter from the Town Board.
This is from the Town Board. We're hardworking, reading your essay. We have a certificate here from the Post, VFW 7765. We have another one here, which is also from the committee. You will have fun?
Yeah.[590.54][590.54](LAUGHTER).
You know what date you're going yet, or not?
Yeah, on the 28th of June.
Good.
Excellent.
Well, once again, thank you. We wish you good luck.[604.16][604.16](APPLAUSE).
And Rocky, can we ask you the same thing that we asked of Rebecca? In September, when you're back and you're settled back into school, would you remember to come back and see us on the second Tuesday of the month?
Of course.
And let us know how much fun you had.
Thanks.
Because other children who come after you will learn about this through you, and it's really a wonderful program. So we thank you for applying, and thank the Red Hook CAC for sponsoring this. It's just, it's just a wonderful program every year. Thank you.[645.32][645.32](APPLAUSE). Jen, did you want to speak at all about the applications? And just to talk a little bit about the program?
Well, I'm...
Jen Kavanaugh is, Jen Kavanaugh has...
I'm a new member of the Red Hook CAC, and for years and years and years, the CAC has been sponsoring, but has kind of administered this sponsorship. We put out the applications, put out the form for applications, the kids fill it out and send it in. And this year, we had lots of great applicants, and we were happy to award the two scholarships. So we're very excited to see you all go to camp and enjoy yourselves. And like the supervisor said, we're eager to find out how you enjoyed your time. So thank you for applying, enjoy yourselves. And thank you to the VFW and to the Masonic Hall for sponsoring the kids. It's really a great, great, great thing. Thank you.
Great, thank you.[724.63][724.63](APPLAUSE). Okay. I think we're going to defer announcements, if we can, because we have such a full agenda, to a little later, and we may have a little bit of a break in the agenda.
Would you like me to give my report?
Yes, that would be great, Sue. I beg your pardon.
That's okay. Town Clerk Month Report, March 1st through March 31st. Total local shares remitted to Supervisor as Town Revenue, $2,079.60. Amount remitted to New York State Ag and Markets for the State of Nueva Program, $78. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Health for Marriage Licenses, $67.50. Amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $217.30. For total state, county, and local revenue are $2,442.40. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the Town Law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with my office. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. I guess I have just a couple of minutes that I could do an announcement, if I can only find them. Last night, some of us were pleased to go to the Village of Red Hook, where we, at the Village Building, witnessed the changing of the guard, though there was no change. The mayor and two trustees were sworn in for another term, and a nice turnout among Village residents, and we congratulate them. You also know that there is a mayor of Tivoli, who had been deputy mayor, so that succession has taken place. And everyone is excited to get off and running. Their fiscal year runs differently from the town's. The town's begins January 1, and theirs, I believe, begins April.
First Monday in April.
First Monday in April.
Well, that's the, not the fiscal year, but the election year.
The election year, yeah, April. It's, I don't know the actual start date of their, is it April 15?
June.
June 1st. June 1st. So our colleagues are sworn in and ready to go, and our own Judge Treeblosser, who is, serves both the town and the village, was also sworn in. Thank you so much for coming. Congratulations again.
My family.
I see that. Your whole family came, that's great. Have a great time, Raji.
I came all the way from Egypt.
Fabulous, fabulous.
Thank you.
I think that's a first, that someone came all the way from Egypt.[925.26][925.26](LAUGHTER). And the other thing I wanted to just alert you to is, it is taking place tomorrow night, and there might be someone here who is interested in it. There is a citizen preparedness training sponsored by the Red Cross that I believe our Disaster Preparedness Committee is involved in going to and participating in. And what it is, is a program free and available to the public. At Bar College, they have offered space in Bertelsmann Center at the Weiss Cinema, and they are going, Red Cross is going to provide tools and resources that you need to prepare for any type of disaster, and to respond accordingly, and recover as quickly as possible. And while we often think this is something that someday we'll have to worry about, we never think that we're really going to have to worry about a disaster until it happens. So it's wonderful if there are a group of people who are well-informed and know what to do. So we're hoping there will be a good community turnout for that, and certainly the first responders at that event tomorrow night. That's at 6 o'clock at Bertelsmann Center. Any of the Town Board members who wish to go, it would be wonderful of you to do that. And I have a letter from Jackie Zatko, and wanted to get this right up front. She is the president of the Red Hook, or excuse me, the Red Church Cemetery Association, and she wanted the community to know that recently it became necessary for the Red Church Association to remove the dilapidated and dangerous fencing which protected the cemetery along its eastern borderlines. And the cost of purchasing and installing a replacement fence is estimated at $13,000. So the Red Church Association is holding a penny social on April 24th at the Masonic Hall in Tivoli to raise money to help defray the cost of that fencing replacement. The doors will open at 5:00 PM. Any donations of prizes, gifts, gift certificates, or services will be greatly appreciated. And all donations, of course, to the Red Church Cemetery are tax deductible. That's another group of volunteers who happen to be mostly Tivolians, as some people say, but they have been very active in maintaining that cemetery and keeping alive one of the oldest churches in the area. And actually, our adisha here demonstrates that. It was, I think, adopted as our official adisha before I got here. I don't know if you remember when.
I don't remember when.
You don't remember when?
I'm not that old.
I guess you're not.
I was waiting for that.[1109.76][1109.76](LAUGHTER).
Yes, you're not. But the Old Red Church has wonderful history. Roger Leonard from Dutchreform Church of Red Hook wrote a book on the history of the Old Red Church and that general area. It's one of the oldest that we have to turn to, and it's showing signs of wear and tear. And the cemetery, too, is a very historic cemetery. So I recommend that penny social, if you're into penny socials, and if you're not, to support it in some fashion. Okay, it is now 10 minutes of 8, so we can open the public hearing on the first item, which is Local Log B of 2015 regarding the Red Hook Tree Preservation Committee. And Sue McCann, would you read the public notice, please?
Notice of Public Hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on April 14th, 2015, at 7:50 PM local time, at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, to hear all interested persons on a proposed Local Law Number B proposed of 2015 entitled "A Local Law Relating to the Increase in Membership of the Town of Red Hook Tree Preservation Commission." Please take further notice that copies of said proposed Local Law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated March 10th, 2015, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you, Sue. And so, the proposal is to increase the size of the board membership? Or not board membership, I guess it's a committee membership? Commission membership? I'll get it.
Yes, that's right.
From five to seven, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if there are any comments.
Somebody's going to say something.
Okay.
Linda Keon.
Yes.
I think it's a grand thing to do. We have so many members that do so many things, and so the more, the merrier, and everyone can enjoy it.
Thank you, Linda. Linda, you are a member of the Tree Committee, is that correct? Yeah, yeah. So you know full well the lifting and lugging that sometimes takes place. And it is one of the most popular committees, and I'm very pleased to hear that there's support for the increase in membership. Nancy, would you like to say something as the Chair?
Well, I'm excited about it because it helps to spread out the responsibilities and, you know, some fresh ideas. And so I'm very excited about it.
Great, thank you. Any further comment? If hearing non, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, the law is thus. "The Local Law Relating to the Increase in Membership of the Town of Red Hook Tree Preservation Committee, being enacted by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, is follows. The Local Law amends Chapter 128 of the Town Code. The amendment increases the members of the Red Hook Town Tree Preservation Commission. Section 2, Severability. The invalidity of any word, section, clause, paragraph, sentence, part, or provision of this local law shall not affect the validity of any other part of the local law which can be given effect without such part or parts. Section 3, Amendment to the Section 128-2B entitled 'Tree Commission Membership.' The first sentence of subsection B of Section 128-2 of Town Code of Red Hook entitled 'Tree Commission Membership' is hereby amended to read as follows. The tree commissions shall consist of seven members who shall be appointed by the Supervisor of the Town Board after consultation with the Conservation Advisory Commission, subject to approval of the Town Board. Section 4, The Local Law should take effect immediately after it is filed with the Secretary of State as provided in Section 27 of the Municipal Home Rule." Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
That sounds unanimous to me. Second?
I just have one point.
For discussion purposes, Bill?
Conservation Advisory Commission or Committee?
It's Council. Council. I don't think it's a commission.
Are we in trouble if we say commission?
We used to call it, I used to call it committee, but I've been told it's council, but Jen's kind of...
It's council.
It's council, right?
Yeah.
I think we need to look at what the code says.
Yeah, I mean, that would be great. I always thought it should be, it's a committee, is what, it's not a board, it's a committee.
I think there was much discussion about this when it was...
Maybe we should just put CAC, and it could be any one of them.[1474.26][1474.26](LAUGHTER).
We can look at your code, and then we'll confirm that.
Okay. Subject to the correct verbiage according to code.
It's definitely not commission, it's either council or committee.
Yeah. I think we talked about committee, and I think committee was what was decided, but I'm not sure. Okay, thank you, Bill, for reminding us that.
So what's at that point in the code?
So if we can move to accept, providing that that is the correct name by our code, is there, is there a vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The second public hearing, which I believe by the time the clerk is able to read the public hearing notice, it will be 8 o'clock. Do you mind, Sue?
No problem.
Thank you.
Notice of Public Hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on April 14th, 2015, at 8 o'clock PM local time, at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested persons on a proposed Local Law Number A proposed of 2015 entitled "A Local Law Amending Chapter 143 of the Code Entitled 'Zoning' of the Code of the Town of Red Hook Regarding TND Cottages in the Traditional Neighborhood Development," which is also referred to as TND Zoning District. "The amendment will permit a larger size for a TND cottage in the TND Zoning District. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed Local Law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. The Planning Board has classified the action as a Type 1 action and declared its intent to serve as lead agency for the matter. A copy of the EAF is on file with the Planning Board Secretary. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated February 25th, 2015, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook."
Thank you, Sue. And so I should say as well that we refer this to Duchess County Planning and to our own Planning Board, and we received back from John Clark that the Department of Planning in Duchess County recommends that the Board rely on its own study of the facts in the case, with due consideration for the comments above. Our department fully supports the proposed changes. We are convinced that the current 1,200 square foot size limit is set too low and should be addressed with more flexibility. So I won't read the entire, it is available to you if you wish to see the comments from Duchess County Planning, but that's essentially the most important section, and they do support the change that we're proposing. So I would like to open the public hearing. Is there any public comment regarding this change? Maybe I should read the, would it be helpful to read the law first?
I don't remember reading the whole of the law.
I didn't think you did, it's a long...
Can you just summarize the consent of the law, which is on file with the clerk, and refer to the resolution of adoption? It's actually a pretty straightforward Local Law, which simply defines the definition of a TND house.
Okay, so I will read then the resolution as it will stand, and then see if it generates any public comment.
Did we hear back from the Planning Board? Other than...
I have not received it yet, no. I have not received anything.
The paragraph says that it was spawned on April 15th, colleagues.
And they did indicate to me that they had reviewed it, and they were in favor, but they did not, they were supposed to provide written response, and you're right, they didn't provide a written response yet.
I haven't received it yet.
No, no, I mean, we have a blank here because we were waiting for them to submit their written response. We thought they were good at the public hearing.
Well, do we know, though, that they were in favor of it? Yes.
That's my understanding.
Yes. Does anybody know what it was?
Well, let's open the public hearing and see if we've got any comment.
All I can tell you is in the secret negative declaration, they reference it, and they reference their support for it.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
Okay, so let's, let's... Okay, so let's read this, open the public hearing for any further comment. The Town Board would adopt local law A, proposed of 2015, referred to as local law I, of 2015, local law amending Chapter 143, entitled "Zoning of the Code of the Town of Red Hook Regarding TND Cottages" in the form attached hereto. Is there any public comment? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is bringing some of the zoning full circle. I remember when we began doing the, working on the details of the zoning amendments and the zoning code changes that would help to bring the code into better alignment with our master plan. We said there would be from time to time amendments probably made, and the board would be asked to consider amendments, and I, is this the first? I want to say this is the first amendment, is it? Am I right?
It's the second.
Second?
Second.
Okay. So, laws are laws until they're amended, and this is a minor amendment, and I think that we're grateful to everyone who has worked hard. Bill, your committee, I know, has worked hard on this. Chris, you've given due time to this, and Harry and Jim, so thank you all very much.
And I do have an email from Michelle that she had sent us last week indicating that the Planning Board discussed it at their meeting on Monday, and are in support of the amendment, and she thought that Kathleen was preparing a letter to that effect, so that's why we were expecting a letter.
Okay.
So perhaps your resolution could indicate that review the matter on, let's see, Monday would be April 8th, last Monday would be April--
What, we could go yesterday?
Third?
No. It was the sixth.
The sixth. So they would have reviewed it on April 6th?
I didn't say April 6th. It was last Monday. I'm thinking of the year.
Yeah.
Any more comments?
Okay, so the minutes will reflect that the Planning Board reviewed it on April 6th and recommended, while we don't have that, a copy of that letter, we will, our resolution will reflect that. Are we still open, or did I close the public hearing?
You closed it for the chair.
Thank you. So subject to that, we will accept the law as it stands. Is there any further action necessary?
You would need to move to adopt the resolution approving the local law.
Okay. I've read it so many times, it feels like I've already done it.
Probably the party just--
"A Local Law Amending Chapter 143, entitled 'Zoning of the Code of the Town of Red Hook Regarding TND Cottages,' being enacted by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook." That the local law amends Chapter 143 of Town Code, the amendment applies to traditional neighborhood development zoning district, and is intended to increase the maximum permitted size of a traditional neighborhood cottage. The amendment is designed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of town residents. The proposed amendment is consistent with recommendations of the town's comprehensive plan, with Greenway connections, with Greenway Compact Program, and guides for Dutchess County communities pursuant to Chapter 17-3 of Town Code. Section 2 is the typical severability. Section 3 is amendments to Chapter 143-49.1 of the Town's zoning law, titled "Traditional Neighborhood Development District." Section 3.1, the definition of TND cottage is 143-49.1U of the Code under Dwelling Units TND, is hereby amended by deleting it in its entirety and substituting thereof the following new definition of TND cottage. Two, a detached, TND cottage, a detached, single-family dwelling unit that shall not exceed 1,500 square feet in gross floor area. The definition of TND house in the 143-49.1U of the Code under Dwelling Units TND is hereby amended by deleting in its entirety and substituting thereof the following new definition of TND house. Four, TND house, a detached, single-family dwelling unit greater than 1,500 square feet in gross floor area. This local law shall take effect immediately after it's filed with the Secretary of State as provided in Section 27 of the Municipal Home Rule. So, I so moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Well, maybe with just the exception that it just took to explain it that before the maximum size for the cottage was 1,200, and this amendment changes that to 1,500 square feet, just so, you know, the public understands exactly what we're doing.
Mm-hmm. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Richard, thank you.
Thank you.
So Sue, we can turn to you to file these two with the Secretary of State, then?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, before moving into the agenda proper, is there anyone here on the board who has any announcements they would love to make tonight before we start?
I kind of do.
Wonderful. Do that.
Unless it's been made before, but I don't think it has. But anybody in the Town of Red Hook knows, if you drive by St. Paul's Lutheran Church, there's a banner there that says it's their 300th anniversary. But the town should know for sure that St. Paul's Lutheran Church in the Village of Red Hook is celebrating this year its 300th anniversary, from 1715 to 2015. And Lorraine Humphrey provided me with a copy of a citation signed by the Governor of the State of New York, March 22nd, 2015, in the Executive Chamber, concerning the celebration of the 200th anniversary of the church. And I just want to take a half a second to read the first three paragraphs.
Take all you need.
Whereas the Empire State is home to many outstanding religious institutions and organizations that serve as cornerstones of their communities and enrich the spiritual lives of their members, the citizens of New York welcome this opportunity to commemorate the 300th anniversary of St. Paul's Zion's Evangelical Lutheran Church of Red Hook, just up the street. And whereas in 1715, the descendants of the German refugees of the Palatinate formed the congregation of St. Paul's Lutheran Church in Red Hook. Today, this congregation remains a testament to the special gifts of ministry and outreach. Its longstanding tradition of guidance continues to serve as a source of inspiration in a church where fellowship, respect, and service to others are held in the highest regard. And whereas the prayers and good works of the St. Paul's Church reflect the devoted unity of faith and exemplify the solid foundation and longevity of this church and the meaningful purpose it has fostered in the lives of generations of congregants. And whereas, and whereas, and whereas. And he signs it then to confer this special citation in honor of the 300th anniversary of St. Paul's Evangelical Lutheran Church.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Bill. If anyone is in doubt about the way that a church appears, you'll see at the top left panel of the Red Hook Bicentennial, represented on our bicentennial quote. That is a, it's a wonderful Gothic church. If you haven't been in it, I recommend it. I was married in that church, actually. Oh, those loo, many years ago.
Wasn't 300 years later.
It wasn't by 300.
They don't mention that in the whereas.
I know, I know, but I would say it was, it's been very important to many of us who grew up in this community and our long history in the community. And I know that many of you, some of you may remember Pastor Paul Henry, who was a minister there in the early 50s, whose son, Paul Junior, became also a Lutheran minister and will be coming back to preach to celebrate the church. I think it's in July, so I'll try to remember to make an announcement when they have that celebration. Paul is an old friend, and it'll be wonderful to have him come back to town, and we should all try to make that service because it's a special, special place. Thank you all for listening. Thank you, Bill, I appreciate that very much. Jim, do you have any announcements?
I do not, Sue.
Harry?
At the last meets, weeks EDC, Economic Development Committee meeting, the business people, representative of the business organization in the village came in, and maybe a slip of tongue, maybe it's a little bit early, but it's time to get, to get, to get ready for it, if you're out there and want to get your picnic baskets ready. But on July 3rd, they're going to reinstitute fireworks at the, at the high school that apparently was a tradition years ago.
Yes.
So they're, they're all cranked up and, and ready to go for July 3rd fireworks one day, 24 hours in advance of the 4th.
That's wonderful. I'm glad to hear that.
Should be a lot of fun.
That's wonderful. Good news.
That is nice.
You're not, you're not so young that you've forgotten that, I bet. Okay, we'll move right into the agenda now. The resolutions, then.
We've done number 1A.
We've done number 1. There is a Red Hook Community Forestry Management Plan, which is quite a document. I have a copy of it here, if anyone wishes to look on with me. I know you've been provided the copy by email and maybe actual hard copy in the past. And Chris, I understand that we are to, before considering adopting and approving this Community Forestry Management Plan, need to do, fill out the EAF, so--
It's completed for review. We need the explanation. And Sue, Simecan, I've provided some copies there. Do you consider those to the board?
Yes, we have them.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So, very simply, this is just a, an EAF for the review of the consideration of adoption of the Community Forestry Management Plan, which provides guidance on the management of the community's forests, including trees located in parks, rights of ways, and on municipal property, identifies best practices for planting new trees, maintaining trees during construction, and maintenance of trees. And the Forestry Management Plan, this is a Community Forestry Management Plan, by the way, also identifies outreach goals, professional contacts, and recommended species based on regional climate. And you can review the administrative provisions of the Environmental Assessment Form, but the form takes you through the Planning and Zoning Actions and Land Use Plan, and determines that it's consistent with your existing adopted land use plans, including your Open Space Plan, and that your, this is a townwide project, obviously, which is why this is a fully EAF. No zoning changes required as a result of this action. It's in the Red Hook School District and so forth. This is administrative information. There is no proposed development, so you'll see that the next few pages are blank on purpose because it's not a particular analysis. So you go to page 10, where the text picks up again. There are, when you use this new form, you may remember that it gets populated by the D E C database, so it calls out, because this is a townwide project, it calls out any spill sites that happen to be in the area of the environmental review. And so it does call out these sites. This is just an automatically generated provision. So you can see, that's why those are called out here. And there are, it identifies lake streams, wetlands, and ponds, and so forth, that are within the area, and all of these are obviously good reasons to have a forestry management plan in place. And again, this is a Community Forestry Management Plan. I think I want to distinguish that from a specific forestry management plan that is a D E C type of document that's for the actual management of a particular forested area, harvesting and that sort of thing. It's just as a Community Forestry Management Plan, it's just a different type of document. It is within the flood plan and so forth. So these are, it's just essentially information for your review with respect to the matter, and gives you that information. And the resolution that's prepared for your review indicates that the Forestry Management Plan has been submitted for your review, that the adoption of this is a Type 1 action, but there are no, there are involved agencies, and this is the fully Environmental Assessment Form that's been reviewed, and that you've considered the criteria, and one of the things that this resolution includes is that the adoption will not have a significant adverse on the environment, and then a draft D I S will not be prepared. And then the resolution goes on, it indicates that the Community Forestry Management Plan for the Town of Red Hook is hereby approved in the form on file with the Town Clerk. So it's sort of a one, single resolution, so your consideration. And that's it. For procedural aspects, the Tree Commission might want to talk to the sections of the law as the plan.
Yeah. Is there anything, Nancy, that you would like to discuss with us about the Forestry Management Plan? Is there anything you'd like to go on record about it?
Well, we attempted to do it ourselves. Often, tree committees hire people, but we, you know, we worked for about five years as a tree committee, and so we thought, well, let's see what we can compile. So, you know, we did, we did contact professionals, we did a lot of reading, a lot of research, and it's pretty generic and simple, but I, I've seen forestry management plans that are really very tight and strict and formal, but I also wanted to have something that I think we could really work with, that we're educating people, not, you know, not shaking our finger. So, it's pretty user-friendly, and there's always room for improvement. Already, I, there are a couple of things I'm going, nah, but, you know, that, we can always make changes and make amendments as we use it, and, and we have started to use it a little bit. We, you know, we've done some things, and, you know, I've had people ask about trees, and so, for now, it's a start, and there's always room for some improvement.
Isn't it used as a model by a different group?
Mm-hmm.
I thought it was used as a model for a different group.
I'm not sure, Linda. Maybe. I, we read several other forestry management plans from other towns, and I sent it around. I sent it to Teresa, I thought she might want to look at it. I sent it to the Planning Board. I mean, all of these people I sent it to have a gazillion things to read, so it's probably somewhere in your pile. So, and they were, you know, very good about responding and--
How about the forester?
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah. Oh, definitely sent it to our Region 3 forester, George Pofus. He sent me some suggestions, and we tried to incorporate them. So, that's sort of the history and where we got where we are.
I think it's a remarkable effort made on the part of volunteers to come up with something that's, not only is it friendly, but, but as a practical matter. You know, when I was reading How to Plant a Tree, and I've attended some of the tree planting--
Right.
--activities.
Yes, you have.
And, no, it isn't, I'm not looking for that, I'm just saying that I learned, you know, things that, I've been planting trees all my life, and I didn't know some of the things that I learned from this and from the activities of working with you all. So it's, you've, you've really brought a wonderful amount of knowledge to so many people with those tree plantings, and we thank you for that. You and the whole committee have done yeoman's service.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. And so, we come to the point where we can--
May I make a comment?
Yes, please do. Yes, please do.
Having read the whole thing, it looks to me like it's going to be a very useful document and for the public and for residents of Red Hook who want to make selections on the, the best kinds of plants to put on, put on their own property that are friendly to this environment and this climate and whatever.
Well, you know, we really were trying to consider our audience when we compiled it. We wanted it to be for guide, for maybe a guide for, you know, even a development if they're building, if they're building and how to treat trees or construction. But also for anyone who can just, as you said, Harry, somebody can read and say, oh, okay. This is a good selection. So I, yeah, I think it's kind of a useful guide too for the.
Actually, I found a devil, yeah. I'm having to take down a number of ash trees on my property, which I thought was wooded before, and now it's a lot less wooded. So I have to do something about them. And this would certainly be something I would use.
Well, today I just got a call from someone who had trees taken down by the town. They weren't, they weren't crappy, but they just noted that some trees had to come down. What, he heard that the Tree Committee might be able to help. And we, so we are able today. I said, okay, I have, I have a Linden that we could possibly do for you. Could you send me the information? So I emailed him the information and Tom Stash. And he called me back and said, yeah, that'd be great. So we're, we're going to put a tree there for Tom Stash. So, so that, and we are being contacted quite a bit more now about trees and what to do and could we have one? You know, as long as it's in the right of way. We, we don't landscape people's yards, but, you know, we certainly will give them a tree in the right of way or, yeah.
Want to mention Arbor Day?
You know, I, I don't, I don't want to go on too long, but.
If we could wait and, and, but don't let me move from this subject. Sometimes I do. I did want to get the town board's resolution in this. But before doing that, is this intended to be online, available to people online to, to review? With technology today, we can probably have it scanned and online for people to refer to.
Yeah, right. But is, like, do we put it on the town, is it on the town website already?
I don't know. I doubt it if it's not been adopted. If it's not been adopted, I doubt.
Draft was.
Is it that? I don't know. I can't.
Well, we'll, we'll adopt it and then.
But we can put it on.
Put it on.
Yeah, so that people can go there and look. Actually, I think it is because somebody called me and said they wanted to look at it. And they went, I think they went online and saw it.
Good, okay. Well, we thank you for all the work.
Well, it's just not just me. Yes, the whole community really pitched in. They really did.
Okay, so, so this will be resolution, you will number the resolution, approving the Town of Red Hook Community Forestry Management Plan. Whereas a proposed Town of Red Hook Forestry Management Plan has been submitted to the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook by the Red Hook Town Tree Preservation Commission. And such proposed Community Forestry Management Plan is on file with the Town Clerk. Whereas pursuant to 12810 of Town Code, the Tree Commission may develop and conduct a program of public information in the community after receiving approval of the Town Board. And the adoption of a comprehensive resource management plan is a Type 1. We did this, the, the EAF. There are no other involved agencies. The full EAF was prepared and is signed here. Now therefore be resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook by a favorable vote of not less than a majority of all the members of the board that the town supervisor is authorized to sign. Page 13 of EAF, the adoption of the Community Forestry Management Plan will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and a draft E I S will not be prepared. Number three, the Community Forestry Management Plan for the Town of Red Hook is hereby approved in the Form on File with the Town Clerk. Is there a motion?
Shall I move?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. And now to your point.
Oh, about Arbor Day?
This is adopted. Yes.
Oh, okay.
It is adopted and now Arbor Day.
Short commercial.
Short commercial. That's perfect.
I really will try to be quick. Yes, we, we are having our usual, you know, little booth here on, on Saturday, the Saturday after Arbor Day, April 25th. And we will have tree seedlings and some blossom fruit transplants that we give away. And we'll have tree owner manuals and tree tchotchkes. And we'll have the posters, the winning posters, Arbor Day posters from Mill Road School will be hanging here. And I, and I want to thank Linda, who gets the seedlings and the transplants and organizes them beautifully and gets them all ready. It's quite a tour. We'll be there from 10 until 2 on April 25th. And also for a week before and a week after Arbor Day, Eleanor Friary is at Mill Road School doing tree planting with all the first graders. They all plant a little seedling along the nature trail, the Abbot Gale-Bodstein Nature Trail. And third graders get a lesson about tree biology and the importance of trees in the outdoor classroom. And also she organizes the K through 5 Arbor Day poster contest. We are going to look at 500 posters. And we, we, we pick about 20. And every, each child who wins gets a book about trees. Eleanor Friary organizes that whole thing. It is a ton of work and she's been doing a great job with it. So that's one area. We give away our seedlings. And we're also going to plant 10 trees. We are going to plant them, we're going to plant them in Jefferson Road and Adams Road over there by Conways. We're going to plant nine trees and eight trees in there. And we're going to plant one tree at Tom Stash's. And we're going to do a commemorative tree for Mary Choffey. And that will be on the turn, we have George Hildreth's tree and then it'll be Mary Choffey's tree. But we're going to wait and do the ceremony on May, it's going to be May 23rd soon.
Okay.
Sorry. That's a change. It just came about before I came. And we did this because John Choffey will be coming to Red Hook May 19th. And his son said he would love it if maybe we could have the ceremony when his father was here. And I said, fine, that'd be great. So we were going to do the 20th, but then his son said, well, you know, there are a lot of people who'd like to have come who work. So then we changed it to May 23rd. So May 23rd, 11 o'clock here at Town Hall, we're going to have a, a tree dedication to Mary Choffey, who did many things in our community also. She's done, she has done a great deal. And so I think that's it. We, we may not be planting on Arbor Day because the trees are coming out late because of the winter. So we may have to plant a week later, but we'll just have to go to the floor. Did I leave anything out?
I'm going to be fine.
Okay, so I think that's it. So yeah, please come Saturday. We, we love to give away trees and we have all, we even have a raffle and it's free. Just put your name in and your chances are great. Okay, that's it.
That's great. Thank you, Nancy.
Yeah, thank you. I did grab one.
No, it's, it's, you have, you're, you and the committee's enthusiasm for tree planting is unmatched, I'll bet, in Dutchess County. And we're very, very grateful. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a resolution to authorize the Agreement for Professional Services of a Trails Planner. And attached to the resolution, I don't think you all have this attachment because it's over 100 pages. But it is, it is an agreement for professional services. And the bid was let and Alta Planning and Design, Inc. has an office in Troy, New York and will be the consultant after we pass this resolution. So would someone read this, maybe, Jim, would you read this Trails Planner Resolution?
Right here, yep. This is authorizing the Agreement for Professional Services Trails Planner between the Town of Red Hook and Alta Planning and Design, Inc. Whereas the Town of Red Hook, Dutchess County, New York, the town issued a request for proposals dated March 2nd, 2015 for a professional trails planner to develop a Red Hook townwide trails plan in the Town of Red Hook. And whereas after review of proposals received, the purchasing agent assisted by committee, including representatives of the Town Board, Village of Tivoli, Village of Red Hook, and Winnicke Land Trust, has recommended approval of the proposal of Alta Planning and Design, Inc. with a fee estimated not to exceed $14,492 and such other terms and conditions as specified in the form of agreement for professional services. The agreement for professional services, a copy of which is on file with the Town Clerk. And now, therefore be it resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook as follows. Supervisor Sue T. Crane, or in her absence Deputy Supervisor James Ross, is hereby authorized and directed to execute the agreement for professional services with Alta Planning and Design, Inc. on the terms and conditions set forth therein. Such agreement shall be approved by the officer executing such agreement consistent with the terms of this resolution. This resolution shall take effect immediately. And I also move that then.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Is there any conversation, discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So we're trusting that you read that 100-page thing in your D cap.
I read it in such detail that I was awake all night, one night.
This is our form of agreement. And part of the reason it's so long is that it has, yeah, documents attached to it that are really not part of the substance of the document. The basic document is really just a couple of pages of proposals, so.
Thank you for your work on this, Kristin. Okay. Move to approve contract for Water District Pump House. Harry, would you like to take a stab at this one?
Yes. Authorizing the Town of Red Hook to award contract number 3616.2 for the Pump House Improvement Project in the Town of Red Hook. Whereas the Town of Red Hook has a need for improvements to the pump house in the Town of Red Hook. And whereas the Town of Red Hook has prepared a request for quotation for contract number 3616.2 to solicit qualified contractors for said project. And whereas after review of the responses, the Water Board has recommended Harp and Mechanical and Construction LLC be engaged to complete the project. And now therefore be it resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook if the Town of Red Hook hereby awards contract 3616.2 to Harp and Mechanical and Construction LLC for the improvements to the pump house for a base quote and alternate number one as set forth in the Water Board's recommendation. Now therefore be it further resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook as follows. Supervisor Sue T. Crane, and in her absence the Deputy Supervisor, is hereby authorized and directed to execute a contract for public work with Harp and Mechanical and Construction LLC on the terms and conditions set forth therein. Such agreement shall be approved by the officer executing such agreement consistent with the terms of this resolution. The resolution shall take effect immediately.
And I would like to note that this was a contract that was, the contract documents were prepared by Hank and Ted. And that Hank indicated in the memo that I referred to, the board received April 6th. That's the memo that is referred to in the resolution. They received four responses and they selected the lowest of those quotes for 29850 plus 2750 for one of the alternates for painting pipes with a total contract of $32,600. Wanted to make that point. So that's what's referred to in the resolution and is contained in the contract.
And I shall move.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
That that was the lowest reputable bid that we received also.
It was, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and again.
They went through the bids in the, in the, this wasn't a formal bid proceeding. It was an, it was a request for quotes.
Yeah.
Because of the size of the contract. But, but they did give you a review of the proposals and it was the lowest cost proposal.
Good. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. That was a lot of paper and a lot of consideration and a lot of behind-the-scenes work. Thank everyone who was involved. Okay, second on the agenda is a discussion of St. Margaret's Committee. And I'm hoping Dr. Ross can lead this conversation.
There's actually three topics. Basically two are related to, the one would be the request for an appointment of another member. I'll do that last. I'll first read the, the letter that they gave me to read to us and then just a brief rundown of that survey that they did. If that's okay, I'll do it in step fashion. This is dated March 1st, 2015. It's from the St. Margaret's Committee to Supervisor Sue T. Crane and the Honorable Red Hook Town Board. Since 2010, the St. Margaret's Committee has endeavored to promote and support the Red Hook Town Board's charge to develop an adaptive reuse plan for this historic landmark. Our committee comprised of Michael Brown, Kathleen Dowris, Ralph Resenda, Patrick Hellbrand, Patricia Hassler, Rosemary Zengen, and chaired by Paul Fredericks, God rest Paul, so. We have engaged in discussions, membership drives, some fundraising events, and community outreach projects to further our goal and generate interest and ideas for the St. Margaret's Home. From October through December of 2014, we conducted a survey to solicit public understanding and ascertain community interest for its future use. While certainly not a scientific poll, we believe that 350 submissions we've collected provide good direction. With this in hand, we now seek guidance from the Town Board. We cannot do full-scale fundraising without telling the public we're relying on for support. What the project uses of St. Margaret's Home will be, we know there is public support for modest town commitment. We want to contact a grant writer and/or development planner so that we might develop a business plan, a full fundraising plan, and grant submissions. We look forward to your direction. We have enclosed the recent survey calculations for your consideration. We can provide you with the surveys if that will be your interest. Please get back to either myself as their liaison or Rose Zengen, our secretary, with comments on adaptive reuses you have considered for a national historic landmark, respectfully submitted to St. Margaret's Committee. Along with this, they have a, just a brief rundown. I can go through that quickly too. The results of their survey, they have tabulated them. I'll read the questions. Are you a resident of Town of Red Hook or Tivoli? 93% surveyed, 88, that was yes. Are you familiar with St. Margaret's Home on Route 9? 95% said yes and 83% had answered that. Would you support the adaptive reuse of this building for a community purpose? 59 surveyed, 91% yes. What do you think St. Margaret's Home should be used for? 179 answered. Please rank one being most important and six being least. Senior Assistance and Information Center. That ranked 39%. That was the number one answer. Rent to nonprofit organizations so as to assist the historic site's maintenance to eliminate most of taxpayers' funding. That 40% rate of that is an important. Historic archive use, 6%. Community youth center, 18%. A place for St. Margaret's Committee to meet and plan fundraising events, 7%. And a gallery for local artists, 8%. Would you support reuse of this property if it meant a modest increase in town property taxes? 61% said yes, 34% no, and 16 did not answer that question. What other use would you like this historic property? And these were just questions thrown out. There was a VFW, a brothel, a vegan restaurant, a pool hall, a church, a senior dance hall, tear it down, or a conference center. Are you generally satisfied with the direction things are going in the Town of Red Hook? And 66% said yes. So I don't know, maybe we should look at that and see if we have any ideas that could come up to give them a little guidance at this point. It seems that's what they're asking us for.
I think it's, I think it's, might be helpful because. I think it's, I think it's, might be helpful because St. Margaret's was donated back before I became supervisor, so it's more than 10 years ago.
Does that only mean that?
Yes, it has. It was made available to the town as a donation during my predecessor's administration, tail end of her administration, when New York State Parks and Recreation, I think, had offered a grant with the amount of $425,000 based on the value of the property at the time, that would have been before 2007. And the grant was based on the value of the property. And then there was a change in administration at the governmental level, and the grants were frozen, and as you then recall, the bottom dropped out of the real estate market. And so the grant that was given to the town was based on the amount of money that the value of the property had been appraised. And so after several years, it was reappraised, and in fact, the town was only granted half, less than half, the amount of money that we thought we would get for it. So in addition to that money, and in, I have to say, in all deference to Paula Schoonmaker, who managed that whole grant process for years, trying to pull out the paperwork that was required by the federal and state government. Additionally, we had a grant from Senator Steve Soland at the time, in the amount of $95,000 to us as a member item, to help stabilize the roof. And so we cobbled together the two grants, got some work done. So in fact, the building itself is stable to the extent that it is weatherproof.
Weathering the roof, yes.
I mean, the roofs are safe for a long time. The work was done. But what has been required, and the community should understand this, that what has been required is that we have electricity on, so that there is a safety safeguard system against intruders there. So there's that cost. We have opened it for summer use, the very first summer, we had Dutchess County Arts Council did some work there and had some children's camp activity there. The Red Hook Recreation Director has spent enormous amounts of time, and a large portion of the recreation maintenance budget, and some of the town budget as well, and it involves the highway department as well, in improving the property in terms of the lay of the land, filling in holes, seeding it, bringing in topsoil, so that it was a lawn that could be used for recreational purposes. And in fact, last summer, there was the first summer concert held there. So it has been an enormous commitment on our part for almost 10 years, more than 10 years, actually. And I just wanted to give a little background without going into all the nitty-gritty of the pain of 2008, we all remember it too well. But it did affect us, and we have been stalled in our original ideas because of that 2008 disappointment. So here we are today, more than 10 years later, talking about this historic building, which it is, and we're proud of it, knowing that it has restrictions on it from the gift from Hanaford Chain, that it not be used for retail, ever. That was a restriction on the, on the original gift. So we aren't able to have complete freedom about how we use the property. But I certainly welcome, and I know Bill, you too, I know you'll have something to say, I wish you would, because you were very much involved back then, as you were Deputy Supervisor at one point, I think, when all this was being discussed, and your sister was very involved. So how about you chiming in on what you think about this?
I think we need a new committee or something, anyway. I mean, I just think it's kind of bottomed out, you know, the creativity or the energy to think of some use for the building. The alternative is, I don't know what the alternative would be. The historic nature of it, as we all know from the Aldrich family, of course, has motivated Red Hook people for years. But that seems also to have, you know, not benefited in any practical way. So whether it's a matter of somebody who can generate, you know, some productive work toward getting other grants, could be out there for an historic building like that. Or working through the historic preservation, and, you know, maybe the Aldrich family connections would be available. But I mean, it just, it just takes another, you know, requires a new look. Sadly, Paul left us, as Jim said, but, you know, without his leadership, there's a void there. I think we just have to think in terms of recreating the committee.
Okay.
And take another look at it.
Okay, well, in terms of recreating the committee, we do have a volunteer who is brand-new to our thought in this regard, and it is Tina Keel, who is a very energetic owner of Bella Fiori Floral Business here on South Broadway, who is interested in serving on the committee. I don't think the committee is, is, is in a state right now to know where it wants to go with leadership. For you, Jim, how do you feel as liaison, we should proceed with Tina's application or her interest?
From what I've heard from the committee, Tina very much liked to be on the committee. She isn't interested in being chairman at this time. I, I don't know if anyone is, with the possible exception of Rose, if nobody else could do it, she said she would do it. She, she's the secretary and minute taker at the present time, Rose Zengen. And I think she's been their acting chairman, you know, since Paul passed.
Are you prepared to, are you prepared to propose Tina for, for a new committee? We, because we haven't acted on this committee at all.
You mean as a member of that committee?
As a member of the committee.
Yes, yes, I am.
I, I'm not prepared tonight to, to talk about forming, forming an actual new committee, or even regenerating the old one. I really want to give this some thought, because I tried to explain the concerns I have, and it has to do with the ugly word, money. And, and we just need to have, I think the idea is stated in the letter, a business plan is a good one. I'm not able to pull that together. Jim, I don't know if you know anyone on the committee is able to, or whether they're looking for our direction in that regard.
Well, the way I understand, letter, they're looking for our direction, you know, we, you know, if they're going to do fundraising or things like that, they really have to have our approval.
The problem with fundraising today is, number one, everybody's doing it. And number two, the amount of support for these kinds of, from Mills Mansion on up to Montgomery Estate, to smaller entities, is, there are so many important buildings to, to the Red Church. It's, it's overwhelming, quite frankly, to me. And I'm a fundraiser by trade years ago, so, so if it's daunting for me, it should be daunting to most of you, that, that we try to figure out how to go about this. Everybody is competing for, you know, that, the attention of the community for, for projects that they believe are important to them.
Mike, I have some comments to, thoughts on it, and concerns, really.
Yes.
Yeah, and of course, the front, front concern is money, and in the current tax environment, and the limitations on tax, I don't see how we can, can get the funds from the taxpayers to move forward with this. And having been involved in this, and done a lot of negotiating with contractors and, and the architects, we have hundreds of thousands of dollars of expense left before that is a habitable property. And, and where we can get that money fund from to do that, I, I just don't know. It seems to me that we, that it, it should probably be owned by a non-for-profit organization who, who could, could move forward with it, with it, and with a, with a, an appropriate use that meets the parameters, that, under which we received it. It is a great building, it is stabilized now, but it is not usable now. And so I think perhaps some committee, and some local people who are, who are really involved in, in this kind of a business, would, would form a committee of professionals in, in terms of restoring the building. It, it's almost, well, it does have to be repurposed, I think, for, for some sort of a non-for-profit, a non-for-profit use, ultimately. And I wouldn't, I'd like to, I'd, I'd be concerned that, that a lot of work has been done on it, and it is stabilized, that that's kept up. And again, it's a function of money to even do that. Our own staff from the park department, and the parks have been doing a great job of maintaining the property, but, and the building is certainly secure, but the building needs major attention.
Well, I think, I think bringing it to the public's attention may generate some conversation, and because we haven't got a lot of time tonight to, to devote to the discussion of the possibilities, could we, could I suggest that we table this? I, I would be supportive of Tina Keel in regenerating a committee if we decide to do that, but I, I almost think that we have to open the conversation and open our, our vision of what we can do with this, to beyond the town, and, and I, I can see what each one of your points are. We may have to develop a private-public partnership, and that's going to take some energy, and a lot of leadership.
We jump it all, first of all, you say, we'd say, we still have a committee, you know, and the committee we presently have, unless we-
They're looking for us for direction, though, and we haven't got it.
Right, but, but let me finish. Fine, then unless we disband the committee we have, right now we have a committee. We've got a lot of ideas as to what to do with that committee. That committee is asking us for direction, one. Two, we have a lot of good ideas here. The first thing we should do then is, is have our attorney thoroughly read the agreement of the gift from Hanaford, so we can find out exactly what legally we can do with that building. That, to me, in my mind, would be the very first step. Then we know that, okay, we could rent it to this not-for-profit, or this, this, or this, or that. We, we don't know. I don't remember. I don't know exactly what it would allow right now.
That's fine, is that what you're proposing? That's fine.
Well, that's what we should do. We really weren't proposing anything. I was reading their report, and we were discussing it, you know, because the, the present committee that we have was asking us for advice.
But can't the committee do that? Wouldn't that be a-
Do what?
Exactly what you're asking.
Can I just interject? We certainly did review that several years ago, when we were in the process of doing the grant, and certainly we can bring that information back to the board again to refresh everybody's recollection on what those conditions were. And I want to remind you that we reached out to Hanaford back then and asked them to modify the conditions to give you more flexibility in trying to work with that building and find another use for it, and they were unwilling to do that, at least at the terms and conditions at the time. They were pretty unwilling to, to talk to us about it. So, I mean, we could certainly bring that information back to-
That was a number of years ago. They might be more interested in revisiting that, yes.
I do remember that, and you remember a little.
Yeah, but again, that was several years ago, so, anyway.
Over 10?
Well, not over 10, because that was when we were in the middle of the grant, so it was probably five or six years ago.
So why don't we review the history, what we had done and asked for, and possibly think if we want to revisit that with them. They, you know, they change ideas and stuff, too. We should, we should look before we do something.
And review what they had done, right, and tried to get them to change it, right. But they were not willing to do that.
We do know how much money we spent on it. We had, we had the grant, we know what those things cost, and we also had, we had estimates, not estimates, but contractual agreements from certain contractors to complete all of the, all of the work on the exterior of the building. And those, those still exist, they're a couple of years old, but nonetheless, it's certainly a guide for what it would cost to, to do the exterior of the building, but the interior has to be done, too.
Yeah, right. Bath and so on.
Yeah, there's the septic-
There's no plumbing in it, there's no heating in it.
There needs to be a septic field, it's, it requires everything. So, so what are you proposing, Jim?
Well, I think, just what I said, then, you know, we should just look at the contract, what we had asked Hanaford a few years ago. First of all, look at what we can do right now, what the parameters of our use are right now. And then, and then turn that back to our committee, or what have you, and also what we had asked as far as modifying the use at the time. And, you know, that was a number of years ago, and we could send another letter and say, hey, you know, that's, it's, it's, you know, we appreciate the building, but it's been a white elephant, we haven't been able to do anything with it, and, you know, and get grant money or, or find tenants because of our restrictions. You know, because, let's face it, we've got monthly costs.
We'll get rid of it and return it to whoever could make some other use of it. Because if the town tried and failed.
If Hanaford allows us to do that.
Yeah, that's, that's the other question I would ask, you know. And we can get out from under it, because it might have been a great idea in the beginning, but, you know, as history shows, it's not workable sometimes.
Well-
Then we also have this community center opening up, not on the Baxter Road there, so, I mean, that, at the same time, we'd probably be competing even with the-
Yeah. That's, that's a concern as well.
Unless we can get Bard to take it over, or, you know, some-
Right, so-
Cedar Hudson, Bard.
Exactly. Maybe legally, we can look at that, and if, if we can't, you know, if we come, if we come up with a proposal of use, then we could ask Hanaford again. So we should look at exactly what we can do, and then, you know, possibly search for something, something like that would be, would be great. And then, and if it doesn't fit the parameters, then ask if they can modify it when we, when we have a plan.
Yeah. I suspect that Bard might otherwise be interested, except the cost to renovate it.
I have taken, I have taken Bard, Bard official on a tour, and there is, it's, it's pretty evident to me that there's so much internal work to be done, and such expense in running a building that has those high ceilings, that the uses are going to have to be, you know, it's going to take deep pockets to support that building, and, and someone may have them and be willing to do it. But I know for a fact it is not the town at this point. So, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to slam the door in any volunteers' faces. It's, that's not our purpose. But I'm faced with the reality of being the person to come up with a budget year after year, and we haven't got it, we aren't going to have it, not in this coming year, and not in the immediate years ahead. We're not going to have town money to devote to that purpose, we just aren't. So the question is, you know, what are our choices? And, and I'd like to, you know, it's fine, Jim, you know, the liaison, we can ask the attorney next time to bring us back the, the, in the May business meeting, bring us back the considerations that we had in the past, and we'll look at this again, because it will be committee's topics following that, and maybe we can thrash out some reasoning. Would that meet with yours and the committee's satisfaction to table it for tonight and get some more information?
Table, I don't know what we're tabling.
We're tabling any action, waiting for the information you ask for.
The only action that the committee, near as I can tell by what I read to all of us, is asking for, they're asking for two things. One, to appoint another member, a fresh new member that was apparently was interested in becoming a member of the committee. That seems to me like a simple thing, regardless of where we think the standing of the committee is. And two, they did do this survey, so at this point, you know, as their letter says, they're just asking us for advice. So then my thought was, we have a lot of good ideas. We know the building costs us money and we haven't done anything productive with it or had, it's done nothing but cost money. So my first thought was then let's revisit our contract, find out what we legally can do, and then see. And then, and if it's something it doesn't quite, maybe revisit it. You know, it's been a number of years. Hannaford might consider being more lenient on our possible requests for use also. But then it got to come to us. You know, we're going to have to go to them if we come up with some ideas.
What you're suggesting is it's certainly a stellar...
You know, I mean, yeah.
Okay, so we'll have a report on the contract for the next time. That would be the business meeting of May. Unless you think you can do it by next Wednesday, Christine?
I'd like to be here for that, and I won't be here next Wednesday soon.
May 12th, then?
Possible.
Do we have a board meeting with three?
Yes, we can, clearly.
So we'll put it on the agenda for May 12th to revisit the contract with Hannaford. In the meantime, Jim, I'd like to suggest that you talk with Wynt Aldridge and see whether he is willing to contact Hannaford Corporation again. See if he's interested in doing that. I don't know what...
Well, I more than want to do that, but why don't we review the contract and ask what we might want to ask him to ask them? I mean, that should come from, you know, I'm not going to say, oh, Wynt, contact them. What are we about? Well, I'm not sure. We got to look and see. Doesn't make sense. I want to know what we're talking about if we're going to talk to them, right?
Okay, we'll leave it up to you to discuss it then, after looking at the contract next May 12th. And you can let us know what you think, and we'll move forward after that.
Yes. Can you see her?
Yes, yes.
This is, is it a business question?
Yes, yes.
You okay?
I feel a certain idea. I'll find out before I leave. Thank you all for that. Thank you, Jim. So I have just a brief...
I wonder if you didn't, does she want to wait off on the appointment of a member of the committee?
I think we should.
It's fine. It's Italian.
The next topic on the agenda is the Town Hall parking lot discussion and the Town Hall ADA improvements through the grant that we have received from the Community Development Block Grant. We have been granted almost $100,000 from the Community Development Block Grant Program to bring ADA compliance to the parking area and Town Hall. So we have met with Harry and I and Teresa Burke. And Brandy Nelson met on the Fourth of February and again yesterday to discuss what issues we need to address. And I believe that Brandy has a full summation of what we're looking for. We're looking for by April 30th, cost projections for both the development of the project scope that will be phased in, as best we can tell, and I'll be better able to report next time when Brandy has contacted Dutchess County Planning. But we're going to include the paving of the parking lot and be aware of the large sidewalk project that we have proposed coming in in the year and a half ahead that will come from Town Hall and run all the way to Hannaford. So there are two things going on. There's a need for the handicapped accessible components that is going to be paid for by Community Development Block Grant money. There is parking lot remediation that has long been overdue. And then there is, those two elements will be tied into a project that will be the sidewalk that runs from the bank to our north all the way to Hannaford. So it's a complicated project, but Brandy promised she would get back to us with timelines and cost projections by the end of this month. So I'll have more to report. Hopefully, I'll have more to report next Wednesday, but if not, certainly by the May meeting, the first meeting in May on May 12th. But it's coming along, and we are encouraged that it's going to be a huge improvement in the Town Hall campus and the town campus in general, including the Highway Department. So that's all I have on that. We have a snow and ice control policy for the town of Red Hook that has been proposed, and Teresa Burke has worked on this. Teresa, do you want to talk about this, or do you want to answer questions?
Did you want me to go through it, or did anyone go through it yet? Is there an understanding of what it is?
Well, why don't you break us on the reason for it, and then we can ask questions as you do.
Okay. The purpose and intent of the policy is to outline the procedures used for snow and ice control and an understanding of how it applies to the town of Red Hook. And what we're trying to do is get the awareness out to the public of what we do, when we do it, how, why. Snow operations, maybe just a brief memory now, but we're going into another winter at the end of this year. And there are things that we do. And having this snow and ice policy in place will answer a lot of the public's questions, like where are the plows? And my mailbox is broken. What are you going to do about it? You hit my garbage can. What do you put on the roads? How often do you plow the roads? What time do you plow the roads? Who plows the roads? So it's a summary of everything that we do in the Highway Department for snow and ice control operations, and it's meant to educate the public and start a conversation between the Highway Department and the public.
Has never existed before?
We have not had a formal snow and ice policy. Other towns do adopt them. And have you read the information?
But I mean, is that adopted by the town board?
I believe it is.
It is adopted just by the Highway Supervisor?
What I would do is take this draft and submit it to Chris to go over. And I do believe that other towns have adopted it. It's not a local law. It's just a policy that we have in place.
Yeah, sounds very intelligent.
So, and it's not that complicated. It's pretty straightforward, and it could be put on the town's website. And I think it would be helpful for people to refer to it in the winter. We are involved in our plowing operations. If we're not in the office, can answer the phone, you know, what are we actually doing out there? Yes, we're plowing, but what does it entail to plow the town of Red Hook? Knowing that we have six plow routes that they take three and a half hours just for the initial part of the storm, that some storms can take 24 hours or more, that we go back after the storm stops, finish cleaning everything up. Who do you call if your mailbox is hit? And what will we do? Where should your garbage cans be? That's not specifically addressed in here, but the fact that we're not covering the damage to garbage cans, because they should be off the right-of-way. So I think it would be very helpful going forward.
Do you have any questions?
No, not yet. Teresa and I talked about this and some of these ideas, so I'm looking forward to reading it.
Good job.
Any questions?
Yeah, you started this whole thing by saying, you know, we're going to, you know, winter's coming at the end of the season. I mean, did you have to, like, rub a little salt into the wound?
A lot of salt, Jim. Tons of salt. We're always thinking. Now, we're very happy that it's spring, believe me.
Yeah, I know. We all...
It's not a big deal.
No, it's not.
Okay, so what you're proposing, then, is to have us, have the town attorney review this, make recommendations, and come back, bring it back?
Mm-hmm.
Well, hopefully, we won't meet it between now and when we bring it back, if we bring it back.
No, I think it's just a basic guideline for the picture.
That would be my assumption, but silly me.
We haven't taken the plows off yet.
A couple of comments, I guess. Peruse this quickly. The last sentence says, "Are strongly encouraged to remove the vehicles from the road." We actually have, we have a law that they have to remove them overnight, right?
Yes, but this is during any snow event.
Yes.
Because we don't just plow overnight.
Right.
If it's snowing during the day, take your car off the road if it's possible. And it's helpful for us, and it saves you from any unforeseen damage from the snow. You know, it's slippery out there. It's slippery for the plow trucks as well.
It says mailboxes and fences. Are there fences in the right-of-way? You can't put fences.
There are fences that have been grandfathered into the right-of-way, and the rights-of-way change depending on if it's a user road or a deeded road. And that has always been a big question.
Do you feel we're responsible for fences in the right-of-way?
All right, let's have a conversation about that.
That's why I want it to be reviewed by the attorney.
Yeah.
This is just a draft version?
Right. Well, I do know that there have been comments from residents to my office about the loss of mailboxes. And while they haven't been numbers and numbers, it is a question. And I think we need to, you know, understand what is our obligation? What can we do? What should we do? What's legal? What isn't smart? Whatever. So I appreciate your bringing this to us and getting some legal advice on it. I don't know how many towns have a policy, but I think it appears to me that these winters are not going to be unique. So we may as well get prepared.
Are you forecasting the winters?
I'm not. I'm just saying, listen to whatever I have been listening to. It doesn't look like they're going away anytime soon.
There's also the difference between, you know, the file hitting something and the weight of the snow hitting something. And people don't realize that just the force of the snow when you're pushing back can do damage. So...
Oh, they realize it. Oh, they realize it. They very much realize it.
But it's always, why did the plows do this? It wasn't the plows, it's the snow that we're plowing, and, you know, we have an obligation to keep the roads clear, and it's just part of the process.
Yeah, I just, you know, I am sympathetic to people who lose mailboxes, who can't afford to have their mail delivered to a post office box, because it's just more than they can, you know, more than they can deal with either by going daily to pick it up or just the cost of a mailbox in the post office is expensive. And so I know, you know, I get it, that for some people, it's a real hardship to lose a mailbox. It may be their only communication with their kids or whatever. I don't know. But we need to figure out what is our obligation and what should we do, if anything. And I would appreciate having some direction in that.
Okay.
So thank you. Thanks, Teresa.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chris. Okay. Building Department fee schedule. Bill and Neil, you've got this one.
Yeah, well, Harry and I have been meeting a few times with Steve Cole from the Building Department. And so there's a proposal by the Building Department, which has been provided to the members of the board to increase the fee schedule, the building permit fee schedule. And I would ask that we take a look at this and perhaps put it on the agenda for the 22nd. In addition to that, there's been a recommendation jointly by the Building Department and Nick Anis, who's the chair of the BBA. As I say, Harry and I met with them and discussed it, to increase the fee schedule for the Zoning Board of Appeals. And so I'll make a copy of that proposed increase in the fee schedule and provide it to the members of the board. And that'll be also the subject of a continued discussion at the next meeting.
Now, Bill, just to bring to your attention what we just heard from Jim, Brenda will not be here next board meeting, nor will Jim. Would you think it would be advisable to wait till we have the May 14th meeting instead?
Sure. I don't think there's any urgency on any of this.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. I'd really like to have all board members here if we can. Sometimes it's not possible, but we now know that we're not going to have the quorum the next Wednesday. Okay, so May 12th, if it's all right with you. I can't even write "May." It just doesn't want to work. It doesn't feel like it could possibly be around the corner.
Surely by then.
But I'm good with it. Yeah, right, okay. May 12th, then, is what we'll do. Okay? And Jimmy will be here for that meeting?
Mm-hmm. Yes, I'm just going the end of this week, the next.
Okay. Okay, and I wanted to report back to you, because it was on the agenda the last time, the request for Mr. Williams. As you will recall, he wanted to talk to us about that tiny little spit of land of his that was through someone, anyone. We're not trying to accept blame or place blame, but there is an error in a tiny piece of land that is not zoned properly. And I spoke with him and asked him if we could work out the requested, his requested amendment during a time when we would ordinarily be doing another zoning amendment so that it wouldn't be so costly to run through it for that tiny thing.
Isn't actually a amendment or just correcting a mistake?
Well...
No, because it would have to be a modification of the map, the zoning map.
The map?
Is the only way to implement it. And, you know, when you say it was a mistake, I think what happened is there was a map, as far as we can tell from investigating it, there was a map that was filed at the county. But when the county produced the map for you, for the purposes of the zoning map, that change wasn't included in the zoning map, so that the subdivision of this little piece that he had done didn't get incorporated in the zoning amendment. You know, whether that was...
To whose fault is that?
We're not trying to say that it's anyone's fault. And Mr. Williams is happy to accept that.
But I mean, is he willing to wait? When will we have the next amendment?
I just said to you, he said there is no urgency. He would just like it corrected. And he was happy with the suggestion that we take it up when we next do a zoning amendment, another zoning amendment. We'll look it out, same amount of work gone through, but just include his in that process. He was happy with that. So that's all I have for you on Williams' request.
Well, then, let's remind ourselves of that and not forget to do it next time, then.
The Municity Project is simple. I don't know if you have a form that was sent to me by Hyde Park's Eileen Rohr, asking us to decide to request the use of Dutchess County GIS Assessment photographs in that project. I spoke today with Will Lebasier to make sure that this would not have impact on the cost of that associated program for our Building Department, and he assured me there is no extra cost. So this is simply our, you're authorizing me to sign for our participation in this Dutchess County Assessment of Photographs. And I would suggest that we do this. I think it's a good idea to have... And I would suggest that we do this. I think it's a good idea to have all of the towns that are willing come together and have a database that's uniformly managed by this program.
So these are like all the photographs of, for our assessor takes of properties will all be in this database then, everything?
The data collectors that have been going out on our behalf have been attached to parcels, and they have been registered with Dutchess County, yeah, Real Property Tax. And what this will do is bring those parcels photographs over to Steve's system so that he and, you know, he has access to that as well.
He can bring it up on the currency, everything that.
Right, right. So if I may, I'd like to move that you authorize me to sign this agreement. It has to go out tomorrow. Thank you. Any further discussion about it? Questions?
What is SCA?
That is our software consulting associates, Will Lebasier's company that manages our software. Okay, thank you. I will get that out tomorrow then.
Did we vote? I said aye.
Aye.
I thought you said yes.
We had a second, but I didn't think we voted on it. You just presumed we were all going to vote for it, so.
I didn't hear any saying, "No, I don't want you to do that." Are we in agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
You're all feisty tonight. I don't know what's going. Something in the water. It's got to be spring in the air. That's what it is, the spring. We're going on spring. Okay. And the last thing, the agenda, the actual agenda, is a draft of the employee handbook that has been worked on by the numbers of us. Brenda, first of all, let me give credit to Ann Conway, who is the bookkeeper for the town and has done an enormous amount of work on this. She has had in her past business life development of employee handbooks and has been a personnel representative for a large company. So when she agreed to undertake this, I was thrilled because we've been doing business without a really adequate representation of what the town employee handbook should be, could be, and probably legally must be. And I also want to give credit to Trilby Seerding, who is here tonight. Trilby, thank you very, very much for your contributions. Trilby has been, how many years with IBM Personnel?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, and recently retired. And she was willing and very gracious to come in and spend gobs of time going out over it on her time and then with us, and your insights were wonderful. I thank you for that. So what you have before you is numbers of persons look at it. In addition, the town has brought it to the employees. And if you will look at the attachment on the last page, there are comments collected during our employee lunch and learn, which happened last Tuesday. When employees saw this document for the first time, discussed it with us, had questions, had concerns, had requests. I made no promises about changes in the handbook, only to say that we were interested in their take on it and what we felt would help them in their life here as a town employee. And we got some good suggestions and some good comments. So I recommend that you look at these comments seriously, and I'd like to bring this back. We're not going to go through it tonight. But to say, I think it's almost ready for attorney review. And I've talked to Chris about this. Chris is willing to take a look at it, and we'll talk some more about that later. But there are other options that we could turn to if need be for review of it. But sooner than later, we have to get this in a form and publish for consumption. So our goal is to by end of the spring, going into summer, when vacations start and all the rest, have it in a form where people are actually using it, and we have adopted it. So that's kind of where I am. Any questions about this document? There's a lot in it, and there are a couple of typos. On page three, you'll notice that it says, "Regular work is between 35 and 40 hours a week." Here in Town Hall, regular work week for full time is 35, I believe. Is that the same for?
It's 40.
Forty, at the Highway Department. Okay. You may find typos on page nine. You'll see that the town of Red Hook has, we talked about holidays for which personnel are paid. And the number there does not match the written word. It is the number that was tried to be described, including the two float holidays. Make the number correct. So if you see glaring errors, please let us know, and we'll have further discussion about this as we go forward, trying to keep to our schedule. Okay, anything else on this? Any questions on this before we move forward? I talked, just as an aside, I talked to the Association of Tans today, who gave me some resources, and I shared them with you, about attorneys who do labor relations, handbooks, you know, employee negotiations. So I have that and have shared that with you, and we can look at that as well as a possibility.
What, you sent it email ahead?
I did. I sent it email this afternoon.
Yeah, I saw it.
Okay. Okay, and then there's some brief correspondence, and I really do, and I want to be brief. There is confirmation from the Department of Army that there has been a permit issued to the New York State Environmental, the environmental, sorry, the other way around. The New York State DEC has issued a permit for, no, I had it read first time. The Army, the Department of Army is giving a permit to the DEC to sponsor the Army Corps of Engineers to build a bridge in the north wetlands of Tybale Bay. And this is as a result, I believe, and I'll know more after a meeting tomorrow.
You got more detail than I do. I was trying to make sense of this.
I do. Well, there's no need to have a lot of detail because it's going to be contingent on grant funding. But the proposal is to build a bridge over the North Bay of Tybale that will be a walkway, an elevated walkway that would connect Bar College with the Tybale.
Trail?
Trail, right, right.
Still be a long bridge?
It's, well, it is actually 258 feet in total length. I didn't give it to you because this is just very preliminary, and I have a meeting tomorrow that will include this discussion, and I'll know more. But Sue can.
It'll screw up the iceboarding, right?
No, no, no.
No, no, this is in the North Bay.
North Bay, no.
North Bay's kind of boggy with a few drains for kayaking and stuff like that.
Yeah, there was one area that I think they thought that if they could get a DEC permit, this would be a possibility to enable that trail. So I'll learn more and I'll bring it back. I should know more after the meeting tomorrow. We're talking about grants, and there is some consolidated funding from Empire State Development for things like scoping and funding program identification and public participation in major projects, mapping, GIS, et cetera, and water and sewer capital plans, stormwater management, and green infrastructure, municipal parks and historic preservation, water plant and downtown revitalization, and economic development and business assistance. So there is still money being offered, they say, by New York State. It is only 40 million statewide. It's not a lot of money. But they are tossing it out there for our interest. Here's one for you that I need some feedback on. I have a letter from Sandy Martin, who says, "The Friends of the Red Hook Public Library have planned a casino trip to Mahican Sun on Sunday, September 27th, and she is seeking permission to leave from and return to the Town Hall parking lot. In the past, all local trips have left for Hanaford, but they are no longer allowing this because of parking issues." She would imagine there would be no more than 30 cars. My concern is that we may be under construction out here during that very time.
My concern, yeah.
So I was wondering if any of you know that, whether or not the school has restrictions on use of their parking lots on a Sunday. Do you know?
I don't know, but there won't be that many cars at the movie theater. Maybe they could check with them.
Well, movie theater has.
But why would the school not be able to replace it?
Oh, the school would be, sure.
Yeah, the school lot is usually empty on Sundays unless there has special Asian.
Yeah, I think if the board feels the same. I think I'd like to contact Sandy and ask her to check with the school. I'm sure she's not aware of the project that we have scheduled here, but I really don't want to run into that kind of, you know, conflict.
Excuse me, Sue. I spoke to Sandy because you indicated to me that it would be okay for her to park here. So I called her and gave her that information.
I see. I'll call her tomorrow.
We can't park 30 cars out here anyway.
No, that's about all the parking lot holes is 30 cars.
We have a permit issued for the replacement of Linden Avenue Bridge over the South Hill. So that is in place and signed.
How soon are they going to close the road, then?
Well, I I know they had to be, they had to have the trees down by the end of March.
That's done.
And that is completed. All tree clearing is conducted before March 31st. Within 30 days of the activity, this is largely. The permit should have 12 months, but I think they're aiming for six. That's the last thing I remember hearing.
They gave us our presentation. They just said if they got the trees down in time, they expect to be closed about mid-April. That's what they told us at that meeting.
Yes, and the term was for six months, was the outside. I thought you asked, how many months would it be, would it take?
Well, they said through November, but they said they plan on closing it like mid-April, which is tomorrow.
I think they have the close on the easements and property taking. That was one of the things that they needed to do. They had to get the trees down, permission to get the trees down, even though they didn't have the property easements in place. So that's what they were aiming for. Then, once they get the land squared away, then they can continue with their construction. Usually, they'll send out a notice saying the bridge will be closed on this date to the Highway Department, and we haven't received any communication yet.
Yeah, just, you know, my fear that around the bad weather that, you know, you predicted a little while ago, real quickly, if they don't get moving.
You got it.
So, yeah, because that's why I said mid-April to go. Because they told us the only holdup at that time was if they could get the trees by March because, you know, because of the bad populations, why they require the trees be done by then. All you do is wait and see.
Well, what would you like me to do?
Nothing. We just wait and see.
I learn to put new signs every day. I haven't seen any.
There is going to be rehabilitation of another bridge, Red Hook 25, Broadway over the White Clay Hill. And that is scheduled for, there was a meeting on it in March, but that's not scheduled for another year, I think, maybe '17, yeah. 2017, but that is in the Long Range Plan of Dutchess County Public Works. And they did have a public hearing, a public meeting about it. Correspondence from Bob Balkin, or rather, I'm sorry, correspondence from an engineer to acknowledge the receipt of our letter concerning traffic conditions on the speed limit request for Annandale Road, Route 103, between Kelly Road and north end of County Route 103, to reduce the speed limit. As you recall, we went through that request from Bar College, and they acknowledged receipt of that. And I have, Bill, this is to you. There, the correspondence regarding Hannah Beal. I don't know Hannah Beal. So I, unless the Ag and Open Space has already acted on a letter from Hannah Beal of Rockabye Farm.
I think they asked her to send a letter to the.
Okay. Are they then in?
To be on the Ag and Open Space.
Yes, are they supporting the letter from her? They know her, and they are in full support of her, or do you want to check with them?
Do you know that there's a 50 mile, 5 mile an hour speed limit sign still on Bud's Corner Road?
Oh, I do know. I cast it really early.
And the county should take that down.
The Ag and Open Space Committee at the last meeting said that Hannah, H-A-N-N-A-H-B-O-V-E-A-L-E, and Kimberly Hart were two persons that they wanted to have, you know, apply for the positions. One, Mary Ann Johnson, who really doesn't come anymore to the Ag and Open Space because of conflicts. And then there's a vacancy. So the meeting on February 24th, they won't address that at their next meeting. What happened in March?
So what is your pleasure with this letter from Hannah Beal, Bill?
Well, I mean, the Ag and Open Space are asking you that one or both of these persons be appointed to the Ag and Open Space Committee.
Well, I have only a letter from Hannah Beal. That's all I have, unless somebody else has one.
Well, if you want to do any, what do you call what we do? What's the word we use? What's the word we use?
Reorg.
Reorg, yeah, thanks, Sue. But, yeah, I mean, I would ask that Hannah Beal, if she seems to meet the approval of the board.
Have you met her?
No, I think she actually hasn't come to a meeting. She's recommended by, you know, two of the members of the Ag and Open Space Committee.
I wonder, does anyone else on the board know who she is?
No.
Well, no, she's recommended by.
I do not.
Marina McKellis. McKellis. Marina McKellis is the one who's recommended to me. They're both, you know, young, organic farmers, and they may have something to do with.
I wonder if we, I wonder if we could do this. Could we, since none of us have met her, could we ask her to attend? Since there's no urgency for them to fill that slot, is there?
No.
Could we ask her to attend the May, yet again, the May 12th meeting? Meet us and tell us a little bit about herself. She says she started her own small vegetable farm in Red Hook and is familiar with issues facing farms of various sizes. I'd like to meet her, since nobody on the Town Hall else her. I think it would be nice to meet her and ask her to come on the show.
What address does she give me?
She is very interestingly, of Rockabye, sorry, Rockabye Farm.
I think I met her in.
847 River Road.
That's where Marina, that's where Marina lives.
So there are two people from Rockabye Farm, then?
So we can point to her.
Okay, so there would be two people from Rockabye Farm.
Kimberly's meeting, too. Oh, yeah.
That's my question.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so...
But I'll also tell the, she's got to come to one of their meetings. She was supposed to come to the last meeting, but they told her not to because, you know, they hadn't, she hadn't sent a letter and...
Well, she's welcome to come to the meetings with or without being appointed, and I think, you know, if no one knows her, I think that would be an important start.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So the other name, Kimberly Hart, you may hear from her, too.
What is the last name?
H-A-R-T.
Hart. Also from Rockaby?
I have no idea.
Okay. Thank you. She has a...
She has a floor shop on the...
I understand.
I don't know where.
Yeah, the residency is...
Yeah, I don't know where the home address is.
Okay, we'll have to find out. I have from the Association of Towns official certification that we are entitled to all rights and privileges as member of the association for the year ending December 31st, 2015, and a book for your reading delight, telling everything that Jim voted for when he went down there to this meeting. I thought you'd like that to sit on your bedside table.
I think that's lovely. Actually, make sure you have a frame of hang on the wall in your office.
Maybe you should sign it first.
Don't you think that would look nice on your, on your office? We will keep it in a safe, safe place because truly, the Association of Towns is wonderful help and great resource to us. And I'm being, I'm being silly because it's like...
The shelter is three, four, five hours.
I ask you to authorize me to approve an expense of the following. There has been a seeking of cost proposals for the purpose of modifying the exhaust system in the highway garage. You'll recall that the exhaust system has been a continuing problem out there, and Ted has gone out for quotes. It has taken a good, long time, and we have gotten two. The best one that we have gotten is an estimate from Joseph Dees in Catskill to relocate the intake louver and from its present location to an entry over the office area, and then remove the louver and frame the opening and insulate the same. And the cost I'm asking for approval to expend is $5,200. Is there motion?
Oh, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
It's something we have to do, but I'll tell you, it leaves a very bad taste in my mouth because from my perspective, it was engineered in the wrong place in the first place. Our engineers designed it wrong. You know, well, that's why we spent a very small fortune on the engineers, and that leaves, you know, we have to move because we have to have it functional, and then the Highway Department needs that, and the building needs that. But I just, well, I thought it leaves a very bad taste in my mouth because, you know, right from the very beginning, it wasn't engineered correctly, the location or anything. And now we're on hook for $5,200 to correct an engineering flaw.
But did I hear you say we have no choice?
Yes, you did, Bill. I got my two cents in.
Well, your two cents is very valuable. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And I am sorry about that. It's a disappointment. And that, my friends, is it, and I would like public comment if there is any. Yes, Linda?
In regards to St. Margaret's, that building should be maintained by the town. We need more space. As we grow, we're going to need more space. The front part of this building was built in 1985 at a cost of $275,000. We had to put on an L addition, which cost actually more than this original section. So we're going to need more space eventually in the future. Now, I was on the board of the Elmerdorf Inn. That building took us 25 years to do at a cost of over $400,000. We used to have fundraisers all the time, and as we raised money, we would raise about $20,000 a year through the sale of secondhand items, we would do one side of the building. And that, that building is more difficult to do because it's a wooden building. So every time we do a section, we go around. Once we got that done, then we started on the inside. But we knew what we wanted to do with the building, and that's something that has to be decided. I suggest that the upstairs be for nonprofits so that you can get money from them. Then the second level would be for community events. And the bottom could be used for seniors. The seniors could use the middle section of the building, and kids could use the bottom section for arts and crafts, as sort of an extension of the library. The outside could be used for wedding venues. So you could raise money doing that. And I think we should just keep that building. The group that's working on it as the committee, they would come up with the plans to raise money each year. It can be done. The Elmerdorf Inn is a sustaining building and a great asset to the community. So thanks.
Thank you, Linda. I needed that. Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to ask the board to second a motion I'm about to make to go into attorney-client for the purposes of consultation with the attorney.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We knew we wouldn't get away with that, didn't we?
No.